All right, we'll call this meeting to order. I'd like to welcome everybody to the Ameren City Council meeting today. It's May the 5th, 2015. We will start our meeting with a prayer by Councilman Wright. We'll follow that by standing and pledging to the flag. Councilman Wright, will you?
Yeah, would you join us, please? As we look to our Creator tonight, may we all be in such a way that we're thankful for all the good things that are happening and may the grace of God be on all who are gathered here tonight. May His blessings continue to be granted on our town and on our people and may we prosper as we move on in ways of improvements and accomplishments for our city. And may we always look to our Heavenly Father for guidance in our actions and decisions. And Father, we make our request tonight in the name of Christ. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the liberty of the United States of America, to the republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Mr. Bass.
Here.
Buddy Holly.
Here.
Kenyon Me.
Here.
Ken Manna.
Yes.
Lonnie Wright.
Here. Everybody should have a copy of the minutes from the April 14th meeting in your package. Is there a motion to approve those minutes?
Motion.
Motion by Councilman Bass. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Councilman Holly. Councilman Bass?
No, sir.
Councilman Holly. Floor is open for anyone that has any corrections, amendments, or deletions.
Hold on.
Wayne Bass?
Yes.
Buddy Holly?
Yes.
Kenyon Me?
Yes.
Ken Manna?
Yes.
Lonnie Wright?
Yes.
Is there a motion to approve the salaries?
No, sir.
Motion by Councilman Me. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Councilman Manna. Councilman Me?
No, sir.
Councilman Manna?
No, sir.
Floor is open for question or discussion about the salaries.
Hold on.
Wayne Bass?
Yes.
Buddy Holly?
Yes.
Kenyon Me?
Yes.
Ken Manna?
Yes.
Lonnie Wright?
Yes. This time we give delegations from the audience. If anyone would like to address council, you may do so at this time. If you would, stand and state your name and try and limit your comments to three minutes to accommodate others that might like to speak. Ms. Nichols?
I'm Nellie Nichols, Lady 521 Reservoir. And I'd like to ask all of you, already paid, where do you want to pay somebody to promote heroin? How can you promote a town with a crime rate now, with so many dead people, by the chief? That's crime rate is down. How can you protect the people there at full cost on taking it as big as the city is? And if you, if, I've had a, in the last six or seven months, and there's twenty feet between mine and my car door, and on my carport, I've had a dirt bike, a four-wheeler, and a little dirt bike, and last night, a motorcycle. And it's always sometimes insinuating, it's the victim's fault. You should have offered it, you should have did it. Well, I did hide some stuff in her vehicle. And they just took it. Opened it and cut it, and after a while, we quit reporting it. Why should we report it? Nothing's ever done. And why should you waste your money promoting heroin and paying somebody when I'm going to kill everybody? For God's sake, don't think about moving to heroin. It's my experience. And I've had two really bad experiences with the city. Lost all confidence in them. The chief is always nice, but is not the people that work for him, reflection of him? And I'm an old lady, and they'll say, well, it's God made it, somebody did. No, well, I'm an old lady that lives long, and they know I live long. And then I've been told, I think we need that law from sun down to sun up, to protect our property. That's exactly what I think. And then maybe we could stop it. And then you can report suspicious behavior. They don't take rocket scientists to figure out what's going on. And then, not just me, but other neighbors that reported it. And then the fellow that we have talked about being suspicious, he starts digging through the ground. And then I get a little note in the mailbox, just a little note, handwritten note, and says, "Watch your mouth, witch, felt with a baby or else." I'm not afraid of them. Not going to hide under my bed, and I'm not going to hide in my house. And if they come in there, if they didn't wake up, because I guess I did too. I think we have the right to protect our property, but it's stupid to pay somebody. And then they'll say, and people stopped. There was a theft on Trent Street the other day. Did they report it? No. And then if you don't have a serial number on the weed area or the landlord, you don't report it. And then the dirt bike, the four-wheeler, there was never any record, we didn't report it. And you tell me, how brave are they that they can come that close? And you know that they had to push that motorbike, I mean that motorcycle, up or down the street because they didn't have to keep it. They had to push the big four-wheeler somewhere. And we live two blocks from the police station, and I never see one.
What's your address?
521 Reservoir. And then, there's a history of that apartment house up there. A long history. They had men, labs took out of there, many have died up there, many have been arrested. And why can't you do something about it? Right behind the school. Why couldn't you just say, okay, if you're going to live there, you need a drug test, or we need a background check?
Well, we can't do that, Ms. Nichols. That would be truly a police state. We can't, that would have to be up to the person that owns the place.
But why does nobody ever patrol that neighborhood?
Ms. Nichols, I met with you today.
I mean, four cops, you tell me, I want any of you to tell me, how four policemen, as big as this town is, what kind of protection do we have?
That's about, I mean, that's about normal. Matter of fact, we just did a study for a town our size, the city managers did a study for a town our size. We're spot on for the number.
For four policemen?
No, 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 no. For four on that shift.
And that's when the crimes are committed, is on the second shift. And most of them from midnight till four o'clock in the morning.
Yeah, Ms. Nichols, we're going to hire that position. We're going to take that money from another position that we streamline from.
And what do you hope to accomplish?
No, listen to you, no, hang on. We're going to take that money from a position that we streamline for the maintenance job. So we're not taking like a police officer's job and creating this public relations job. So it's not affecting that at all. But we have, over the last few years, the crime rate's gone down. According to Tiber's, and it's data, I bet we can back it up, over fifty percent with a decrease in our police budget. So we've actually decreased our police budget. If you would be more than willing to, let's say, pay double the taxes, your property taxes, and everybody in the city of Hermon, then we could maybe funnel that money and we could, I'd love to have eight police officers on. I'd love it, I'd love it, but that's not feasible.
Did you ever stop and think that the reason that crime rate's gone down, people stopped reporting?
No, that's, no, that's not, no.
I can tell you, a lot of people, they don't even bother to report.
If that's the case, then, if that's the case, then we can't help.
When they broke in my, when they passed the lock, I said, I didn't report it. What good is it to report?
You'll never recover your items if you don't report.
You don't report.
I shouldn't have, I shouldn't have to tell you that, Ms. Nichols. Today, we met with you out there, the police chief came out and met with you, Dr. Hart came out and met with you. We told you what we're going to do, we're going to increase the patrol on your street, we're going to park a police car on the other side of the road from your house. And I don't know what kind of, what kind of service you can get anywhere else for the kind of taxes that people pay around here for that. You're getting a pretty good bang for your buck. We're sorry about what happened to you. We do the best that we can do, and that's all that I can tell you.
Well, what about the other?
That's all I've seen, Ms. Nichols.
Say that on police car.
I'm not going to argue with you. That's all I can tell you.
Ma'am?
Yes?
You've got four police officers controlling the city?
Yeah.
You don't have any officers you've got controlling the county?
I don't know.
The county's a whole lot bigger than the city.
Well, all I know is, nothing stops the police.
No, and they're everywhere. They're not, it's not, don't act like it's here.
No, it's not.
But we have to hire public, we're going to hire this public relations person to counter the things that you're going to be saying. We're going to brag about the fact that our, that our numbers have decreased, Ms. Nichols. We're going to brag about the fact that Cornstalk Heights was named about three years ago one of the top fifty nicest neighborhoods in the country to live in. Laugh at it or not, that's what it was named by Home and Garden Magazine. So we're going to brag about those things to counter the negative things that you're saying. Because you see, this panel of people up here are pretty much doing this job for free because we love Hermon. So we're going to continue to do it and try to build Hermon up despite what you say.
What about?
Despite what you say to make Hermon a better place for my kids, okay? So if you have something stolen from you that's thirty feet from the street, I can't help that.
What about the, all the paintings? What about the peel?
You need to contact the state. They're not, they're not breaking the law, Ms. Nichols. That's not our.
When did they ever get in here to begin?
State law.
The state law allows them to. That's not Hermon. That's not Buddy Holly. That's not me. That's the state law. Contact Center Yard. That's who you need to contact on that. Yeah, because we're right with you.
But you can't tell me that the crime rate is going down.
Oh, yes, I can, and I can show it to you. It's a fact.
Get out there and talk to everything.
It's a fact, Ms. Nichols. You got anything else?
That's it.
All right. I told you I'd let you talk the whole time. Thank you. We're still under delegations. If anyone would like to address council. Mr. Ledoux?
Hey, how are you? Um, I've missed a couple meetings, so I just wanted to get an update on what's going on with the building, if the county's going to tear it down. That's all.
I think the county is going to open that up for bids next week. It's going to be open for bids, I think, two weeks, which will take us to the end of this month. And then I think they have a two-week delay at that, so we're about a month away, I think, from seeing any demolition. And they, they're going to allow up to a hundred and twenty days for that to be torn down. So I don't think it'll take that long, but it could go into the latter part of summer.
Okay. Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, also, the county executive contacted us and asked that next week we allow county employees to be on the agenda to come and update the council on that project as well.
Okay. That'd be good. Still under delegations. Being able to move on to old business? Councilman Wright?
No.
Councilman Manna?
I've got one thing. I was in Nashville, what, last Tuesday? I think that's what I was, last Tuesday. Talking with the Department of Defense about providing the farmer's market with the SNAP program. If you don't know what the SNAP program is, it provides a service to the less fortunate community where they can buy food through that program. I think they get something like two dollars' worth of value for one dollar. And the farmer's market can participate in that program. And there's contracts to be signed if we do that. And that's something we need to decide through this council. Might put that on the workshop for what we're going to have. That's all.
Councilman Bass?
No, sir.
Councilman Me?
Yes, sir.
Councilman Holly?
I have just one thing. I talked to Howard Kirk, and he informed me that they've signed the agreement on starting demolition and cleanup and paper mill. And he said that if you want to decide what you want to do with the buildings, you have to do it before the second week in this month. Things that will start construction.
Kevin asked if that needs to be voted on. I don't know if it does or not because it's not our property. I don't, I would think that if everybody just let Kevin know what they wanted to do, he could make a home waste on that, as far as those buildings go down there.
But, but if they were all left, it would be the responsibility of this body to take care of them, so I think it'd be much cleaner if it's, add them on the agenda.
Okay. We'll do that then.
That's me. Others may feel different.
If they don't tear them down at cleanup, and we decide we want to do away with them later on, then it's going to cost us to demolish it. I think we need to make a decision.
It should be a minimal cost, since if you leave, you would totally, still, we're going to have to pay probably the backs of staff and all of them.
If you're lucky.
Well, I'm going by what Maria's done with the houses.
Okay, we'll put it on next week's agenda. Anything else? Councilman Holly? Department of Reports, Dr. Kirk? Kevin, do you have anything?
Two things. I've briefly mentioned to you all that we have started a process trying to get some grant funding for repairs on the Panzy Hill Bridge. I'll have some additional, more detailed information for you coming out within the next week on that. But we are trying to get some funding to address some maintenance issues on that bridge with the commitment from the city being nothing more than the investment of some of the staff's time to administer the grant and the funding. Additionally, Maria and I attended a FEMA kickoff meeting this morning for recouping funds related to the ice storm. Just to let you know, the majority of the funding that we have involved in that process deals with the salt brine found in the streets, which at this point in time FEMA has said is not eligible for reimbursement. After talking with them today, that's still the region four stance, which is the region in which we're located. We will be submitting paperwork on that with the expectation that they're going to decline that particular request. There is an appeals process available to us, and we will most likely be exercising our appeal rights, which is an initial appeal back to District Four. And then if it's denied once again, we actually put it between our headquarters in Washington.
Kevin, on that bridge, are you talking about the problem that's been detected having to do with the tier? Okay.
Yes, sir, it's a scouring of the pier.
Anything else? Chief, you hear everything?
Mayor, only I've got y'all. Got our monthly report breakdown for the fire department. The only other biggest thing that we've got going on, we've started our annual hose testing and hydrant maintenance and stuff. Probably the next month or so, we'll start doing some hydrant flow testing. So if you get any complaints about the hydrants, we've been doing pretty good the last couple of years trying to keep issues down, dirty water and stuff, because we're starting to flow a lot at night, especially around the businesses. So it don't, doesn't disturb them during the day. We pick them early in the mornings, like when the family's going to be away from home. Maybe we'll keep the complaints down as well. I don't, I mean, I don't know how many people got asked here. I didn't know, maybe one or two. But that way, if anybody says and thinks, oh, once we get to a closer date, I'll make sure y'all know about it, so if you hear anything about it.
Okay. All right, Chief Hottle?
Yes, a couple things. We, I'm going to start giving y'all our drug reports each month and the rest we make, just so, you know, examples like Ms. Nichols, so you can tell people what's going on. In eight months of April, we actually had total twenty-two arrests, three arrests on drugs. We also did a undercover stain on a house in Hermon here on a dealer who'd been dealing heroin. We actually had the, did a search, and we were able to find forty grams with heroin, which had been about fifteen thousand dollars on the street, and we had received over ten thousand dollars. That individual is now in jail, and he was on parole, and he won't be coming back out. So we do do lots of drug arrests every month, and every month I'm going to start from ahead and doing that. And this little light going, Ms. Nichols, I do see her quite a bit. Just so you know, the report she's talking about kind of spans about three years. She's had a couple things stolen. Another motorcycle was stolen last summer, and a motorcycle was stolen last night. And we have a beaten motorcycle last night right now, so, but like the mayor said, we're going to do what we can about it. We're in serious patrol going out through there because we got a person assigned to that area. But, you know, that's what I'm going to report about.
Chief, she said she lived alone. Does she ride a motorcycle?
No, that's her son's. And she claimed that she had a bull with her that was stolen. She made a police report, but nine-one-one nor to us had a report of it. I don't know if she, if her son made a report and used it under his name and his address because I pulled up all the reports from her address. And the time that I've been for the last three years, she's had four reports, four coffees. One was dealing with her renters. Other one was dealing with someone that was trying to put Jared Hollis' son in her yard. She was upset about that. And then she had the moon bikes going last summer, and then last night, she had a motorcycle stolen. So she's got my number. She's free to call me anytime. She has called me, and I've always dealt with the issues that she's had.
Move on to any other, let's see, any other department reports, committee reports. Moving on to HUB report. Bill Young?
Thank you, Mayor. I'm going to ask you a question in just a moment, something y'all brought up a minute ago that stirred something in my mind, but before I do that, and I've been remiss not to say this before, I think, but I really appreciate Mr. Wright having the prayer at the meeting. We have one at our meeting. I know a lot of places, they're not allowed to do that anymore. They may come when Hermon can't do it anymore. I don't know, but I appreciate that as a person who's been here for many, many years.
Paper mill property, does the city, do you all own the property?
No.
Not until, until they do a clean-up.
Is it, in the cleanup process, is it, how's that classified as far as any activity in that property? The reason I'm asking is, is we're looking at the possibility of getting on part of that property to build a electric land. What we'd like to do is get another feed from our northeast station into the district, and that would allow us, what that would do is, it would give a back feed to the hospital in case we lose a district station. We could feed them outdoor feed, but I said, you know, part of that would need to run through that property. And I said, well, I know it's tied up in all this EPA cleanup, and I, you know, I don't want to go in there and start stirring anything, don't know what's going on, but.
Is it buried or overheaded?
No, it'd be overheaded. So can we talk about that in the near?
Yeah.
I wasn't sure even who owned it or how that was.
Once they, once they turn it over to us, then we, to keep us, our liability, and we don't have to do any digging without going to the EPA and put it before them before we do it.
Okay.
Have them out and look at it. But other than that, that's definitely the only, yes, the only thing that was said that would affect us. And that means we have no liability for anything they discover after it.
When we were discussing, you know, we're good until they got to the point where we're going to set poles, and I said, no, you, if you go down there and dig, I know we're going to have some issues with that.
You start to drown, you have to run to the EPA, show them where you're going to dig, and they'll come out and say, okay.
You can, just kind of keeping me abreast of where that's going.
Were you, were you talking about foot, and how much line are you talking about? Because we're looking at recreational.
Yeah, Councilman, I don't, I don't, I can't speak to all those details and that. This is just something that came up in one of our little meetings the other day in conversation. And somebody was asking me specifically, so I don't know. I mean, we certainly would, would want to work, and we may be able to do something different, but the guys were just looking at that as a possibility, so it's, it's not anything that's out there right now.
Well, I have a question for you that I'll later take about that.
Okay.
Just some quick updates. Sorry to take up so much time. Since the weather's gotten better, we've been able to get back out Fisk Heights and Edgewood Road area and get back on that electric work we've been doing there. We kind of got sidelined when it got so wet, couldn't get the trucks in, which is part of the reason we were trying to move the line to begin with. So we're back on that, getting that done. You may have seen sewer crew down along through McDonald's and down by the state garage and that way. Once we got those stations rehabbed, we were still having some pumping issues, so we went through with our crews and cleaned the fourth main all the way from Harding Station all the way down to Cardiff. And that seems to have cleared up all the problems because now we have the grease trap problem and so forth. I don't think that will reoccur. That occurred over a number of years prior to having the grease trap and all that, everything just flowed into that sewer down there. You had a 78 line that had about the size of my fist for an opening in sections of it, so got that, got that going, and we're about to wrap that project up. Ruritan Road, we've, you can see the electric work, you know, it's going on a good schedule. We had a couple of issues, I think I mentioned to you before, particularly with sewer, and we've been able to move some lines from where they were going to be and solve that, so everything's moving forward out there. Got those issues worked out. Our water lines, we're going to open bids this Thursday for the water line replacements under our SRF monies. And those projects will also include, you know, working on, working on the street, particularly one of those main ones we're going to be doing is down here on. And I talked with Mr. Hammond, we've talked before about the paving. I know y'all are thinking about a paving program. Actually, that Devonia Street will be repaved completely as part of this project, assuming we get some good bids that we come back in here. So that part of it we can get done. And we're also going to do some sewer work ahead of that, that we need to do right there in front of the hill hospital. We're in the process now of doing our water tank inspections. That'd be done every five years. Mr. Davis said, put those on, we had them on staggered schedule. He decided, just, let's just do them all, get them all on the same five-year schedule. We're doing that so we can get a list of items together as we work on our budget for the utilities, so we know what repairs and maintenance and so forth we need to do on the water tanks. So that's what I have. I appreciate it.
That's one more street we're going to have to pave.
Yeah.
Yes, sir.
Chance, I have a note of condition of the service electric guy that was working out at, on Old Bay Jones.
Yes, yes, I do.
Has he any complaints?
He is, he has improved greatly. In fact, one of, one of Chief Gaus's men had contact with him the other day. He'd stopped me in Allen, was telling me, he had spoken with him, and, you know, he's, he's come a long ways, you know, and so has the gentleman who had the cave-in down there. So, yeah, he's very fortunate, very fortunate in that situation. Thank you.
Thank you.
Move on to agenda items. The first item to discuss and possibly take action on putting a stoplight, putting the stoplight in front of Kroger on flash after eleven PM. This is a request that I've had from several people, I guess, that travel through there at night. They, I don't know, the timing may be out on that one, or, I don't know, but they, people that are coming through there in the middle of the night have to stop at that one, and a lot of times they have to stop at the next one. They were asking if we could put that one on flash like we do with some of the ones downtown after eleven o'clock at night.
Ma'am, could I address that? One of the loops down there that controls that was bad. That loop has been repaired. Mr. Labs was down there the other day and said, time goes by, it doesn't make any difference to us one way or another, what you do, but just will make you aware that I think that was part of the issue.
Oh, okay. Probably is, so it's back on the, I guess, the centers? Okay.
Yes.
Okay.
You may want to, you know, just look at yourself before you make any decisions on that, or do it, that's fine.
If it's okay with everybody on the council, and I wasn't aware of that, we'll put that back on there next week if it's still the problem.
If we do, I'd like to see it, stay with the city, like, put a pin, that way they're all the same.
Okay. Next item on the agenda is the reading of resolution R zero five one five dash zero one, a resolution for the backhoe contract. This is included in your packet. Kevin, do you wanna, or Angie, either one of y'all, do you wanna elaborate, or Dr. Curly?
Uh, yeah, this, uh, resolution is required by Regions Equipment Financing. It's a different process now than Regions used to have. We have about a dozen papers that have to be signed versus three or four we used to sign. And this resolution is required. Um, would you like it to be read?
Yes, sir.
Whereas the governing body of Tennessee, the L C, has determined that in order for the lease, to better accomplish its public purpose, the L C needs to acquire the use of equipment described in the schedule attached to and set forth in the equipment or lease purchase agreement, the lease attached here to. Whereas the L C has determined that the most economical and efficient, efficient means of acquiring the use of the said equipment is pursuant to the lease purchase of the equipment to the lease and whereas a copy of the lease has been presented to and considered and approved by the governing body of the L C, now therefore be resolved by the governing body of the L C as follows. Lease hereby authorized to enter into a lease between the L C and Regions Equipment Finance Corporation as a lessor, with all riders, certificates, schedules, and amendments thereto, substantially in the form attached heretofore, and the execution and delivery of the lease is hereby approved, authorized, ratified, and confirmed.
It's a bigger copy.
Thank you. Um, the mayor of Harham, Tennessee, and each and any of them without the others is hereby authorized to execute and deliver the lease on behalf of the L C and substantially the form presented to the governing body of the L C at the meeting. With such changes or additions thereto or deletions therem, as the officer executing the same shall approve, which approval shall be conclusively evidenced by his or her execution of the lease. Mayor of Harham, Tennessee, and each and any of them without the others is hereby authorized to execute and deliver. On behalf of the L C, such agreements, indemnities, purchase orders, leases, bills of sales, certificates, and other instruments or obligations, as they or any one of them may be deemed necessary or appropriate to the accomplishment of the lease, and the execution and delivery of any such agreement, instrument, or obligation prior to the date hereof by any such officer is in all respects hereby confirmed, ratified, and approved. Mayor of Harham, Tennessee is hereby authorized and directed to fix the corporate seal to such instruments and to attest the same. Item three, the proper officers of the L C are authorized and directed to do or cause to be done all such other acts and things to make all payments, including rent payments required pursuant to the lease and related documents, and to execute all such documents. Certificates and instruments, as in his, her, or their judgment, may be necessary or advisable in order to carry out the foregoing resolution and the L C's obligation under the lease, or any amended, renewed, or supplemental lease, or all actions hereto foretaken by the officers of the L C. In connection with the acquisition of the equipment and negotiation of the lease are hereby approved or ratified, confirmed in all respects. The L C hereby designated the lease to be qualified tax exempt obligation under provision of section two sixty-five V X three of the Internal Revenue Code as amended. Item five of the L C and the proper officers of the L C understand section fifteen of the lease insurance and hereby agreed to provide property and liability damage in accordance with the terms of the lease. Signed, Christian Mason, Mayor, tested by Angela Skidmore, City Clerk.
I know we proved the resolution.
Motion by Councilman Wright, seconded by Councilman Best. Councilman Wright?
You know, like Charlie said, it's required and we waited a long time to get this project going.
Councilman Best, motion. Floor's open for questions or discussion about the resolution. Irving Nunn, Call Roper.
Wayne Best?
Yes.
Buddy Holly?
Yes.
Ken Yen-Ming?
Yes.
Ken Manek?
Yes.
Lonnie Wright?
Yes.
Uh, next item to discuss and possibly take action on fencing bids. In your packet is also a, a bid that was received from the, um, specs that were put out in the newspaper. We had, I think, uh, six, seven, eight people that inquired. We had one bid that was turned in that's included in your packet. This is coming from the money that, uh, the public image repair money from the T V A board that we have, so it's not actually budgeted money from us or taxpayer money. It's, it's kinda money to make a, make Harham a better place. Um, I'll open the floor for discussion or I'll, or I'll entertain a bid, however you all wanna do it. Entertaining motion, I'm sorry.
Did we determine total cost, Tony?
Uh, Kevin, what's the total cost? I know that if you do, if you, if you exercise the upgrade option, which is going to vinyl fencing, I think it's ninety-nine, uh, thousand, but that's with the upgrades.
Without the upgrade, seventy-four thousand, seven hundred and thirty dollars. Um, and then you also have the option, if you wanted to upgrade some builds and not the other, they are priced by build, so different ways to prove it.
And you say the money is provided by the, the T V A? This is the, this is the, remember the project, you know, that we, I think we identified ten projects to do, to use with that, the money that was coming from that board. Uh, that's where this money will come from.
So, we're not taking anything out of, you know, Charles?
No.
The only question, the other bid seems a little higher, but you're giving you the
post for it as well. I noticed that it says wire and top post on it in the A base bid, but if you go down to the alternate, the upgrade is like vinyl fencing and posts. So, we're gonna touch the post on it?
Is the specs identical to what's on the field now, like South Harham, we're going back to six foot, six foot fencing and, uh, big baseball fields is going back with the tall fencing.
For the most part, everything is the same. There were a few minor changes and a couple of areas where we upgraded some stuff, but it was very minimal and those upgrades were bringing in mind with more of what we'd be recommending for a baseball softball field facility.
Has anybody looked at the life of, uh, this black vinyl fencing and post? Versus the galvanized?
Yes. I just assumed it'd be longer, but I don't know. I haven't done any research.
We, we have not looked at that. Um, we, we did, uh, based upon the information provided by the fencing companies, the black vinyl, uh, does call for a heavier gauge than what the galvanized is. Apparently, the, the black vinyl, uh, when you're comparing, say, six gauge to six gauge, uh, does not hold up quite, uh, quite as well, or I guess I should say nine gauge to nine gauge. So, uh, the black vinyl actually calls for six gauge fencing, so that's, uh, also part of the upgrade. And that was at the recommendation of the fencing manufacturers.
How long's the current fencing been there?
Since the ball has been there, I don't think we, we replaced the corners, but I don't think we really replaced the, uh, the entire fencing. This will be the first time, I think, since they've been there, they've been there since the seventies.
Thank you, Minister. If these last as long as those, I'll be eighty-one next time they get replaced. They're forty years old, I know.
I noticed, I noticed, uh, we have references from Kingston Parks Red, so they parent them as.
Looks like the school. Lee Maines was over the projects with the schools, you know, the, the, uh, the T V A project, so he must, he must have done something with that. I don't know.
This company also does, they're out of coalfield, they do a fair amount of work for T D I under the state contracts, so they're pretty, uh, forework on T D I projects. And Drack is familiar with the company and has...
Wasn't anybody, Ron County bid or?
The reason I ask about the, uh, durability of the fencing is, I want us to be sure we get the most for our money and we want at least to get as much as what we've gotten so far.
That's about thirty percent. Again, the gauge is very different when people run into that fence, the current gauge, say, dropping for the money. Cause I know I've worked on those fields for twenty years and I, I've never seen any problem with them. Of course, I have been down there in several years now, so... The non, the non-vinyl, is that the same gauge that's down there now, Wayne?
I think so.
Yeah, the, the only thing that could possibly differ is on the backstops, uh, I'm not sure what gauge is actually in place entirely. What they recommend is that the bottom run on the backstop be six gauge and the top nine gauge, which is what all your other fencing is, uh, because your, your bottom run on a backstop, it's a lot more, um, hits with the ball being fouled back and so forth. So, that's potentially the only upgrade.
I mean, is that included in there, seventy-five thousand?
Yeah, the backstop's there. The, the only other thing that I looked at and, and we discussed it, and I know it's not in the bid, but I'm, I'm still, would love to see the tennis court in South Harham come down. It's been there for thirty years, sitting there looking the same way. And while we're redone this, I'd love to see us do something with that. I notice this for the little tee ball field or something there and get rid of what we got. You come through South Harham, you look over there and the field looks nice and you're gonna have a new fence on it and you got this old brown beat-up fence that's hanging down, a tennis court that doesn't exist.
Well, I've never seen anybody hit a tennis ball like that. What's, I don't see a problem with doing that.
I think you've reached out and did it.
I have, I haven't got a final determination yet, but I don't suspect there being problems one that remains for recreational purposes.
Well, if we can verify that, then, you know, we can guess that probably.
I mean, I think we've said... There's motion on the floor, hang on a second. Motion on the floor to accept the bids, which, what you talking about?
The A and B.
Okay. So, item C down through there, right? Yes, total base bid. Okay. So, there's motion on the floor by Councilman Best to accept the base bid, uh, for the fencing. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Councilman Mike. Councilman Best?
No, I, I just don't see us spending thirty-something, one thousand dollars to get the vinyl, uh, the, what we've had, it's been there for thirty-five, forty years. Like I said, if we can get that out of it, most of us probably don't gonna be around. So, I hope I am, but...
I hope I'm sitting right here.
Councilman Mike?
No, sir, I don't have a good idea.
Floor's open for questions or discussion about this.
How much did we actually say in the T V A money was gonna be for fencing?
I thought, I thought, I thought it was, uh, I thought we were maybe planning on most thing in eighty-five, but I don't know where I was.
I heard something in the old minutes, I was reading, we estimated, too.
Cause all that was pretty tight and I don't wanna go over and yank on something else.
Those were all, um, you know, real approximates.
Can you resend us what was submitted to that, and what was approved? The, the resolution itself, council document, I have, didn't have a number for projects. It just had the listed projects here, quasi. I don't think there's any additional.
What we did was, um, remember, we took everybody, everybody voted and, and so we ranked them. And I think we ended up with ten or twelve. Uh, and if we get to the twelfth one and we have any money left over, we said we would address it, but it was prioritized by number one. Everybody wanted to do one, two, three. So, if we could make it, we don't, well, we don't have, uh, we can't do them all. And then again, if we make it finished, we don't have money left over. If that's the case, we go back and, and vote on it here and make T V A aware and then we can move forward and do something with the actual... Floor, we're still open for discussion on the motion in a second. Okay, Call Roper.
Wayne Best?
Yes.
Buddy Holly?
Yes.
Ken Yen-Ming?
Yes.
Ken Manek?
Yes.
Lonnie Wright?
Motion passes. Last item on the agenda is discussing possibly take action on the walk, don't walk signals at the intersection of Georgia and Run Street. This has been discussed, I know and brought up and, and discussed again. I'm not real sure what has gone back on.
The, uh, this came up at a prior, uh, Z E L council meeting work session. Uh, you had requested, uh, that, uh, H U B get a price quote for replacing these signals. They provided that to us. The cost to do the replacement is sixty-five hundred dollars, um, I believe. If you could confirm, I think that can be placed on the city's investment charge account if you so desire to do it that way, but, uh, this is the one remaining project that we discussed potentially for this budget here that the council has not yet voted on. Um, the only thing I would possibly put out there for your consideration, uh, if, if you choose to go forward with this, is, uh, we are presently discussing with T D I the possibility of doing some upgrades to the sidewalk, uh, in, in that area along Run Street as part of the, uh, construction of that place, the Dollar General store coming in at that intersection. Um, we're trying to get T D I to put some funding into that. I don't know if that particular project would require the city to put a match in or would it, this potentially be out there with our match. Uh, so if you decide to approve it, uh, I, I would ask that you, uh, give us a little bit of time to negotiate with T D I to see if we can get some additional funds for that area before we actually place the board or put them in order.
Question on the sidewalks, I've seen that on the email. That being a state highway, is, those are sidewalks? I don't know why we pay them.
I, I understood it, well, I always thought it was curb to curb, but then the sidewalk thing, uh, at least the curbs. Oh, what product, we got it, I do.
We paid for all of our handicap redens that were just, uh, that was part of grant money or something, but it was still city responsibility.
We also got a grant paid for one of the sidewalks that came down from the Saxons, too. We did that.
And I don't think there's any blanket answer to that. Uh, I think it, there's different things that affect it. Is it in the right of way? Is it outside of the right of way? Who originally constructed it? There's a lot of answers there. We're actually trying to, uh, to get by without putting any money into the sidewalk and curb replacement, um, but my thinking was if T D I weren't able to see us put some kind of investment into it and we were gonna approve this project anyway, if we throw that up there as this being our, uh, investment in the upgrades in that area. The Dollar, Dollar General will be required to replace, uh, the sidewalks and curbing along their property line above Georgia and Run Street. That, that's approximately three hundred and seventy-five linear feet. Um, there's, there's probably an additional, uh, I think six to nine hundred linear feet that we're trying to get T D I to come in and help with. That would be extending, uh, north towards the Sonic.
How far down through there is dollars you're gonna take as far as those houses?
All of them.
If, if we, if we approve this, uh, this signal item, then they'd be no start date until you negotiate with T D I, et cetera, et cetera, right, Kevin?
Correct, unless you just have a particular date that you want me to have installed regardless of what T D I says.
Motion on the floor by Councilman Best to, to go ahead and move forward with the walk, don't walk signal at the intersection of Georgia and Run Street to be applied to the investment account. This is all right. And there's second by Councilman Wright. Councilman Best?
I just think there's gonna be maybe some more, a lot of foot traffic for the Dollar General store sitting on the corner, and I think we need to go ahead and put those, those lights in, into the house. And I think we need to go ahead and put those, those lights in, into the high school sitting there on the other corner. We probably need the hells in there, in case for sale.
Councilman Wright?
I agree.
Floor is open for question or discussion.
Mr. Myers?
Could somebody give it for?
Just point of clarification, and doesn't have to be decided, you know, necessarily right now, but when we get, we get ready to order them, you'll notice that you got two options, to have the black or, you know, have the yellow with black doors. So somebody will need to tell us what you want to place the order on at that time, get them set. There's, there's one wee difference, it looks like, in that, in the order time.
Do you have a completion date on the Dollar General project?
I do not at this time, but I would fully anticipate that our negotiations, T-DOT, will be finalized and we will have no trouble having the signals ordered and installed by the time Dallas four opens.
I'm more concerned by the school.
Those two days are gonna be pretty close. As far as the hells, I'd just say, look at the, just for them to meet in the sun and rest them down.
Still under discussion. Call the roll, please.
Wayne Best?
Yes.
Buddy Holly?
Yes.
Ken Yen-Ming?
Yes.
Ken Manna?
Yes.
Lonnie Wright?
Yes.
This Friday night, Janelle Arthur, the American Idol runner-up for Top Five Summer, will be at the Prince's Theater for a fundraiser for the school system. So Friday night, Janelle Arthur, and then on Saturday night, kind of in conjunction with the Medieval Fair, the, there'll be a showing of A Night's Tale at the Prince's. A movie will be shown Saturday night. So be sure you go catch those. The Farmer's Market, do you have an update? When's it start?
June, first weekend in June.
Okay, first weekend in June for the Farmer's Market, still out at Ripper Farm Park. Is there a motion adjourned?